Welcome folks to the Rutland Town Select Board Meeting, our regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. At 6 o'clock, we have a full board, Kurt Hathaway, Joe DiNardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Getty, and Sharon Russell. So please all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America, and to the public who stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Have in your packet these select board meeting minutes of January 14th. Is there a motion? Okay, motion's been made to approve. Sharon seconded, yes. I did hear you. I have two proposed amendments. The first is on the first page. Down the bottom, number four, discuss the purchase of a new police cruiser. We need to identify the out-of-state vendor, who is the govern municipal HQ out of Marlboro, Massachusetts. And they are the Massachusetts state vendor. Then the second is on page three, way down at the bottom, where we were reviewing the language for Article 17 and 18, the depreciation language. I think we should be a little more specific and say that we removed the words "purchase" and inserted the words "replacement" in each. So are you folks okay with those changes? Then, motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes as now amended. Any further amendments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Start these going. All right. Next, board member announcements. Do we have any? Nope, doesn't look like it. Update from the chair. I have a couple of things. The, hmm, I did, just so you know, there's other stuff that goes with being chaired besides the power and the glory, you know? So I did the circle article for the upcoming circle. I did the town report article, and thank you all very much for all of the work you did. You don't really realize it until you go through and read the minutes. We did a ton of stuff. I attended the regional select board meeting last week that was hosted over in West Rutland, and it was called by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Mostly it was informal, but we did kind of a roundtable discussion at the end. And a couple of common themes that came up. One is the high cost of everything, especially buildings and equipment. Very small towns struggling to build a fire department, and various towns trying to update their fire, their town graders, for example, and their fire trucks. So there was discussion about why aren't we getting together more to fund, for example, a salt shed that would serve two or three different municipalities instead of all of us trying to go our own ways? So that may be a theme that we hear more. And because somebody had raised the topic and we were discussing it, I raised Joey's question about the Rutland County Dispatch Center, which got immediate positive reaction all over the place. So many towns are experiencing the same thing that we are. And Devin Neary from the Regional Planning Commission said that he would, he would dust off where we dropped the thing a couple of years ago and see where we need to move from there. So thank you, Joe, for mentioning it. That was good. Okay, um, I met with, we did, we did go to the Public Service Building for an inspection, which was supposed to happen on Monday, the 20th. One of the key subs wasn't there, so we rescheduled and it will be Friday, the 31st. So I say "we," but it's really for the subs and the contractor. Joey's gonna go.
Department heads.
And the department heads. Yes, please. So everyone. If, if select board members show up, just remember this is an unwarranted meeting, so we cannot make any decisions or discuss town business there. We can walk through and we can observe, but if we hit the quorum number, yeah, which is three.
Right.
Okay, and Barbara, Mike Rowe, and I visited about the Pocket Park. I suspect Barbara's gonna fill us in a little bit more if she's on, or Mike will. And the circle is online. If anybody wants to view it, it's got the candidates' information. It's got the, some of the information about our budget, so. And town reports will be at the printers, are at the printers. So we get one chance to proof them, and then they go out in the mail. So a lot of stuff. Big thanks to Bill and to, I know Carrie worked on getting her information into the school officials, too. Right, I will be quiet, more or less. Are there questions from the floor or public comments, or anyone who wishes to be heard, who is not otherwise on the agenda tonight? Yes, ma'am?
I assumed you guys would think that, because, you know, first time here. Can I sit instead of standing?
Yes, you may, and please identify yourself.
Yes, so my name is Catherine Alvarez Rios, and I'm bringing to your attention an issue that I noticed because of recent changes in our federal government pertaining to immigration. I have had the great fortune of being surrounded by immigrants for the majority of my life. Their community has helped shape my life and still does. With that being said, I had hoped to find that my town had a fair and impartial policing policy on file. However, to my dismay, I could not locate such policy. This policy needs to be implemented urgently. I understand that there is a majority demographic that is white and citizens here. This does not mean we should ignore protecting minority. I also understand this may already be a practice with Rutland Town Police. However, this policy really needs to be written down. While the city of Rutland does have a fair and impartial policing policy that you could copy and use as your own, I believe, and the one I would advocate the most for my town to adopt, is the Burlington's Fair and Impartial Policing Policy, because I think it provides the adequate amount of protection to non-citizens. This policy not only protects your vulnerable population, but also fosters relationships between the community and the police, which, as we know, is very important. I believe this policy will only help solidify and build our community, so I really urge you all to adopt a policy similar to the city of Burlington's. Thank you.
Thank you. We often go to the League of Cities and Towns to see what they have as a model template, and our police chief wishes to be heard.
Already passed down a fair and impartial policing policy that every department in the state of Vermont has adopted, had to.
Okay.
But hasn't made up their own, like, wrong.
Oh, okay, so we have it.
Policy, it's mandated that we have to do or make up our own. It should be on the website for the, as it there.
Yes, so there is one that is mandated by the state, but it is not, it does not encompass what Burlington's does. I think it kind of...
I think the one we have right now is more than enough, in my...
Okay. I'm just looking and I don't see it in our town policy book.
It's not in the, I mean, I looked online, it's not in the policies that I...
Is there?
It should be on the academy website.
Okay.
State mandated policy.
Yeah, do we adopt it, though? If we were required to?
We had to. We have to sign the papers and go to the academy and tell them, yes.
Okay, so we should have it in our policy book anyway. We're a non-charter municipality. Burlington has a charter. The rules that apply to them are a little different than the ones that apply to us. But, you know, obviously, we can take a look, and I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I spent a couple of hours on Monday in my other job listening to legal issues surrounding immigrants and asylum seekers, so I'm...
So you understand that it's important to maybe have a more encompassing one?
We'll take a look.
Could you send us in a, maybe a written comment on what areas you see as the main differences that you think need to be addressed?
Yeah, I definitely could. Do you just want me to email it to you guys, or have me?
Yeah.
You can send it to Bill Sweet, and he will distribute it among the select board.
Of course, I can do that. I'll just like, kind of compare and contrast the state one from.
That would be great. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to hear Ed's view on it.
He just spoke about it. He said there, we adopted the state mandated one, okay? And there's a difference between what Burlington has, because they're a charter city, and apparently they have more protections you feel we should at least take a look at. So, so we're gonna get the information with the comparison, so we'll see what's there.
That'll generate a police committee meeting.
Yes. Yes, it will. Yes, it will, because personal...
That's a fair thing.
Fair thing. It's a fair thing.
And see what's what.
Okay, good. Thank you. Welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else who wishes to be heard, who is not otherwise on the agenda, and I'm looking up at thee, Zoom board, anybody up there? Okay, we're gonna move along then. We do have some folks here from the, who are going to present the final draft of the local hazard mitigation plan. So why don't you folks come on up? You too, Marty.
Yeah.
Got the wrong thing.
What?
We're not a hazard mitigation plant.
You know...
Think we gave him his own room, too.
Marty's here for support. You're actually really gonna present, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But, but I, go ahead, Marty.
I first want to thank the town when they made the decision to hire the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to do this. We also happen to be very fortunate in the fact that the person that was assigned to us left the RRPC, and we got Stephanie, who has a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge, and she's wonderful to work with.
Stephanie's come in and helped us out before.
I know. I'd like to thank Bill for his input and Dave for his input. So we had a lot from different perspectives as to what we need and where to go. So I want to thank everybody, and I'll let Stephanie take it from here.
Okay.
Thank you, Marty. And I would echo his acknowledgement of the Rutland Town planning team, because we've reached a critical milestone in the plan update process, and that would not have been possible without all of their hard work. I facilitated a process, but it's really their input that makes your plan what it is. So I feel you have a really solid final draft before you, and that's really thanks to Marty, Dave, and Bill.
Okay, so the next step, we've got the draft. You want us to read it and then adopt it?
Yes, so you have a similar packet, well, not adopt it, not quite yet. So you have a similar packet before you that I presented at the midpoint in the plan development process. So you've got kind of this cover page that announces kind of where we're at. So the teams completed their work to update a full final draft. What you had at the midpoint was the risk assessment and hazard identification work, you know, to identify kind of what you thought the highest risks were facing the community in terms of natural hazard impacts. We kind of got the green light after that public comment period to move forward with then to develop a strategy to mitigate those higher, those natural hazard impacts of highest concern. So you now have kind of, you have the full plan in front of you. Sure.
I just want to add that when we say we've gotten input from the community, we were at transfer station.
Oh, yeah.
And we had a lot of different, we had a board with lots of different things on it, and we asked people to check what was important to them. And then we looked at the whole plant, you know, the whole board and saw what things were important to the townspeople. So that was done, and it was interesting to listen to them and watch them. And a lot of them had some very good and intuitive things to say that I was able to bring back to the committee meeting.
Good. And you were up there. You were the...
I was there.
Okay, thank you for doing that. It's a good way to get public input.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the final draft is being shared now. That work is complete by the planning team, and it's something that they're comfortable putting forward to encourage local input from local officials and the public. And so this, this, tonight's meeting pretty much kicks off the final public comment period on your plan, which will run through February 11. So I've got some messaging out there today. Bill has some materials to post on social media. And we're really kind of looking to get the word out that the final draft is available, available for public review. So we're asking for all comments to be emailed to me. I'll assemble those and then bring them back to the planning team to see what needs to be done in response to what, if anything, we receive. And then we will be looking for the board to sign off on the plan and authorize us to submit it to Vermont Emergency Management for what's called preliminary approval or approval pending adoption. So the state gets an opportunity to review your plan, and that they'll be using this review tool that I've included as the third document in your packet to determine, in their opinion, whether your plan contains all the federally required contents. I, I feel like I have a good working knowledge of what the state reviewers are looking for, but I've never had a plan get approval pending adoption on the first try. There, I can guarantee you they're going to come back with something that they would like to see finessed in your plan. Usually their comments are things that, you know, I can handle with the planning team pretty easily and don't... They're not a substantive change to the real core trajectory of your plan, okay? But they'll, they'll weigh in, we'll, you know, resubmit, and then we'll ask for the board to adopt the plan once we receive the approval pending adoption from Vermont Emergency Management. So I think the key point to make in that process, and I'll repeat this when we come back, when I come back on February 11, you know, once the town says, yes, go ahead and submit this plan to the state, you can't make any more changes to that plan unless they are required during the review. So anything that you'd like to see changed, now is the time to act. So between now and February 11, we're really looking to get any final feedback from the board, because ultimately you'll be the ones adopting this plan and responsible for its implementation. And in addition to local officials, just the public at large, kind of the whole community.
So I know your email is three pages in from the back, A18, so you, we should get to you. Oh, it's right there, too.
Right here, yep.
Even better.
Yep, right, kind of, all the punchlines are on this first summary page.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you, if you prefer to look at a digital version of the plan, I encourage you to go to the website that's listed right here. But the plan in general, you know, lays out kind of what is a hazard mitigation plan? What is the purpose of doing this work? What are the attributes of your community that might make you more resilient or vulnerable to natural hazard impacts? Then it documents the whole process that you've gone through, and, you know, Marty touched on one of, just one of the community engagement activities that were done to develop this plan. There's a whole appendix. Appendix 3 is dedicated to outlining the whole engagement strategy. There was a lot of work done in terms of trying to communicate with the Rutland Town community what was being done and provide them with opportunities along the way to react to different parts of the plan. We then dive in in Section 5 to the Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment part, where we outline, you know, what we're concerned about, and that's, that's the work that you reviewed at the last milestone meeting. And then we end pretty much with the Hazard Mitigation Strategy. Kind of what is the goal for Rutland Town in terms of mitigation? What kind of community capabilities do you have to undertake this kind of work? And then we, we go through a very robust review, an evaluation of a broad range of possible actions. And from that, we identified ones that we thought the town would find reasonable and practical to try to, try to complete. So that's pretty much the mitigation action plan for implementation. So those are the, you're gonna want to focus on those, because those are what you're recommending that you're actually gonna try to accomplish over the five-year lifecycle of this plan. Section 7 is where you outline how this plan is going to be maintained. So I'd really draw your attention to the process that's outlined to be evaluating this on an annual basis, and I'd recommend that you consider including this as part of the annual work that you do to update your local emergency management plan. Kind of roll it into the schedule and processes that you already have in place for certain emergency management functions. And then it also provides a process by which you'll make sure that the plan stays updated on its five-year cycle. So that's the core of the plan. The appendices, there's an adoption certificate, is Appendix A, so you can kind of see what it is you'd actually be signing when you get to the point in this process where you're gonna adopt the plan. You can, Appendix B outlines what the actions were from 2019 and their, their current status. And then I've already mentioned Appendix C outlines the public engagement strategy. So there are very few yellow highlighted placeholders left in this plan, and they're primarily in that Appendix C, because we haven't finished with the public engagement process. This presentation, followed by the public comment period, will kind of round out that, and I'll be filling in those details as we get closer to wrapping up that work. So any questions on the plan itself? Sound pretty straightforward? So I'd encourage you to kind of read cover to cover, and then review the review tool so that you have an understanding of kind of what is, what, what the federal requirements are for the plan to make sure that you feel confident as well that your plan is hitting all the points. I'll be back on February 11th, just to help kind of close out the public comment period, and...
We will be.
We will be back. Hear firsthand any feedback that you might have regarding the draft and anything that you'd like to see revised before we get ready to, you know, submit for approval pending adoption.
Can you explain the governmental interplay here? You mentioned on the cover sheet, this next step is this goes to the state for approval. There's, you've also noted here FEMA approval. This is talking about FEMA requirements.
Sure.
How does FEMA?
Absolutely.
Play in this?
This is actually, so FEMA is the ultimate authority over local hazard mitigation plans. They have delegated the review responsibility to the state of Vermont. So Vermont Emergency Management had to go through a vetting process in order to be delegated the review authority from FEMA. And so the review gets done entirely at the state level, which is a really good thing, because prior to, you know, it's been within the past six years that the state received that delegation of authority. And prior to that, the plans had to go to FEMA Region 1 for review, and they could get hung up there for months. And it really was a disadvantage to the communities. So FEMA ultimately will send you an approval letter based on the delegated authority from the state.
So is having the plan a requirement for receiving disaster relief, or what is, what, I mean, what is the FEMA's requiring?
There was different things, I think I once presented to you about. There's different levels that we, we receive funds back after an emergency, and the amount you get is conditional on how much of these different levels you've come through.
So I'll build on that just, just a tiny bit. So you will, if there's a federally declared disaster, you don't have to have a FEMA-approved local hazard mitigation plan to participate in the public assistance program. So on page one in the plan, where I lay out the purpose for this, I make it really clear that this is really a planning tool. It's not a legally binding agreement between the town and FEMA or anything like that. It, it articulates a vision for steps you can take to mitigate your risks to natural hazard impacts. What Marty's talking about is described in the Community Capabilities part of the plan on page 24. So if there's a federally declared disaster, the Public Assistance Program will cover up to 75% of eligible costs related to repairing from damage. That leaves a 25% wedge. If you have this plan in place, the state will kick in an additional percentage towards that 25% match. So there's a diagram on page 24 that I think really articulates the power of getting that little extra percentage of state match that you don't have to pay for locally, because it can be significant in terms of dollars.
All of this could be gone by the time the plan gets adopted, so we better mitigate hazards in advance.
Well, yeah, maybe outside of our control at this point, but...
I don't think I brought for any, from anywhere.
That's, that's the working theory.
Good, good. Anything else from any select board member? Any questions? We've got reading ahead. And comments to Stephanie. Probably you want them in advance of February 11th, but you'll be here anyway on February 11th, in case we want to mention them that.
Right, and, and I've, that applies to the whole community, right? So we've sent notices out to local official, officials in neighboring towns, community partners. I've already sent the email to Rutland Town kind of department head contacts, as well as, you know, just putting it out there on regular social media for anybody else who may be interested. So looking to gather any comments back by that date so that we can kind of have a sense of what they might look like at the meeting on the 11th.
Fair enough. Okay. So Bill, if you could make sure this gets added to the agenda for the 11th. Very much.
Right.
Thank you for coming in and for all of your good work on this, both you and Marty. Yeah, thank you, Marty. And, and our department heads who contributed. Okay.
Details, a lot of work at that point.
Yeah. Okay, um, so we have any other? Go down through. Um, starting with Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
I gave you three charts today.
I moved them, which I shouldn't have done.
First one is this one here. That's a month of December. Talking about their false service that month. You go to the second page and you see that Officer Plakis has been hammering the sex offender registry violations. That looks like they've gone down.
Am I looking at the right one?
This one here?
Oh, there it is. Okay, wow.
We've been busy doing that.
Okay.
Things have gone down in the south end nicely.
Yeah.
Take a breath of air now.
Yes, it proves our theory on both ends. The increase and then the decrease.
Yes. We weren't wrong in what we were saying.
We were not.
Thanks to Lynn's hard work and all the stats that Velcor provided for us, we were able to work out fantastic...
So this chart, the green, this is Rutland Town is like everywhere else in town, or?
Yeah, Rutland Town's south. Rutland Town is a whole town. Rutland Town, that's the rest of the town, is the rest of the town.
So we would, I mean, these numbers, we would add together for the total number, right?
Right, right. Any questions on that one? The next chart is this one here, that's the top ten issues we dealt with in town for the year fiscal or the year of two thousand twenty four. Just gives you an idea of where. What we do.
Uh, so how many of each? Okay.
Seventy retail tests, there's no value complaints, uh sex offender registry violations twenty seven. Petty larceny for motor vehicles eighteen, grand larceny sixteen, burglaries fifteen, petty larceny from villains fourteen, lawful mischief fourteen, lawful mischief misdemeanor. Unlawful trust fast four, unlawful mischief twelve, violation of official release ten.
So no value is our number two category, so I'm sorry. No value is number two, so I'm assuming that's our miscellaneous.
Citizens assist, things of not of uh. That's that one. Then this one here is one that uh. Deputy Chief Washburn, he took some time, went through all this here. Uh he went through, BSP's got permission from the lieutenant. Uh from BSP and not lieutenant, yeah, captain, lieutenant lieutenant. And Rutland Town SPD and just compared them across the the timeframes of when the calls came in for the whole year.
Wow.
About break down there in the first page.
Wow, so this is when they flip the switch and they start sending the calls through to you.
Correct.
Seven o'clock.
Yep. This is seven, is when we sign on, usually that's when it kicks in. That's just those stats for there. As you go further through, it goes uh calls by, it goes by time of day, we get the calls. And it goes by days of week when the, it surprised me, we're the busiest on Wednesday, but also it's when most of it, we usually have. During most of the time, we had three people working on a, on a Wednesday, so we're able to handle more, more calls that came in.
Um, how do we? Sort of reconcile the data between uh calls and and cases? Um, there's a lot, a lot more calls than cases. And I notice like. On the third page of this path here.
Yep. Third page, so this is again top, this one here is goes month, this is January to March, the first, January to March.
Okay.
First page, oh, okay, then the next one is uh April to June. Cuz that was, I told you, we couldn't do it for one year, we had to break it down into quarters. So that's what Ted did it, so we could get all the data. If we tried to do the whole, whole year in one shot, it wouldn't let us do it. So we had to break it down in quarters. That's how we were able to get all the data.
Wednesday thing is pretty persistent, isn't it?
What's that?
Yeah, it is.
Free officers on duty and they can answer the calls.
You can answer the calls, there's more, more of us here, so if something comes in, we're take, we're taking everything rather than. BSP just taking the old.
So theoretically, could be as many calls on other days, but I I I think even consistently, we're just busy on Wednesdays.
If you go to October, December, you see a bunch of handwritten numbers down, these are the numbers that Lynn wrote down as Ted was making sure we had all the things down. And it just matches the front numbers on this page.
So I guess I'm, so so this here is January to March, but these here, I thought you said these were annual.
That was, that was the top ten calls for the year. From what I'm reading on these things here. Top ten offenses for the year, that's what this is.
Okay.
All the calls. This is all the calls. So this is like apples and this is oranges, so.
I guess it's just that, oh, is you're getting a lot of calls that don't become cases, is that right?
There is cases, these were the top ten cases from what I'm reading, that's it, the top ten complaints we had. Or is this? Top ten offenses that we have.
Does that include state police as well?
I think these are just ours right here.
Okay.
These are all the cases right here. That we get.
So, good information, how are you using it?
So as soon as we move the new building, we have, we have a, we're putting together a new shift schedule for us to, to start to. Go to that point, we try to work some more evenings to stretch ourselves out a little during the course of the week, that's our plan. Then I suspect our numbers will increase in the evening hours by quite a bit at that point.
And the more hours you are available, that will be the less calls.
BSP takes more calls.
So your caseload is gonna go up.
Correct.
Doesn't mean that things are getting worse in the town, it's just that we're gonna have more visibility to what's happening.
Correct.
All right, any questions, comments? Do we have in mind how many cases we think the state police should cover for us or which hours they should be covering?
When we're not working.
Okay.
That's pretty much. I I get it, they're there, uh I know the guys are on the road doing the job, they're like, well, where's Rutland Town, why can't they do it? Well, because we're not working at this particular time or they want us to do more and we don't have enough guys working. Uh, and the other fellows there that have been around while they go look at. Uh, they're doing as much as they can with what they got. And prior to that, they didn't, you had, you had covered all the calls, so stop. So, I mean, but I get, I mean, when you're on the road and you're working and you wish another agency would take it, I understand, I understand it.
Is their response time better, worse than our local police department response time?
It probably depends on what the call is. If it's, they have a different, we ha- we handle everything, parking lot accidents, we try to handle all complaints in the town. Where state police says, yeah, we're not handling parking lot, exchange information, take, take care of yourself, we'll do the extra step and because we're a town department. You pay us to take care of people, so. Saying the site's got a little sound, but he's clicking down it. Pretty, my kids told me a long time about how to do that.
So usually it's Mike Rowe who gives you grief share, tonight it's the chief.
Somebody has to step in.
Okay. Good stuff.
Did you get the, I don't wanna talk about now, the email from Ted on the, on the cruiser and the new numbers and.
I did not, I was just going through the, the minutes though, so he.
Yeah, he sent me a few.
Okay, um.
Now, like, I think it was this week he forwarded.
Is that in the packet cuz you folks authorized me to sign, Ted was adjusting.
I, I think what you, you asked us to, for Ted to look into financing through whatever company we could. And this is the paperwork on the financing, this was the, uh, I would have printed everyone's one, I'm sorry, I thought Ted emailed it to us, but. Here's the application and the numbers, uh, the interest rate is. Because we're buying from uh, not from, I guess, a dealer around here, the interest rate is a bank they use down there, so interest rates are kinda high.
How much?
It's how many years you pick.
Right.
But call it seven, plus or minus.
Seven percent?
Yeah, oh geez.
Wow.
Yeah.
That sucks.
Yeah.
Gee, I'm paying three point nine nine on my car loan.
Yeah.
Isn't that for how long?
Three years, three years, yeah, three payments. You'd probably want us to look around, or if we could do that, or. That's pretty.
So, so this is financing it through.
The bank that the McGovern uses.
So we should, our bank is TD Bank.
Okay.
So we should check with TD Bank and probably one other.
At least, at least, you would think our bank would.
Yeah.
Take, you know.
Yeah.
And and we pay it off in three payments?
Three payments, one, right after the fiscal year starts, we, one payment then, same the next year, then the next year.
I reckon seven point five three.
Yeah, three year.
A little steeper than. I want the credit union, I think.
Credit union, we should look at two, yeah.
It might be worth it, but I, I would think that since the town does business with one bank, and I think Kerry would be our best resource on this.
Yep.
We wanted to borrow money for them to do this purchase.
Right.
And this is the lease purchase, right, basically, or is it a straight out purchase?
It's just a straight out purchase.
But just three balloon payments, not monthly.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna sign anything until we get.
I just wanna bring your attention.
Or information.
So do we pay the, the, um.
Do you guys wanna take a quick look?
Nah, I remember the numbers, the, the, the interest kind of, uh, I just wanna make sure I understand it, that. It's three payments to the dealership or do they get all their money upfront?
They get all their money upfront and we, we, we pay the bank back.
Okay, so it's three balloon payments to the bank.
Correct.
First thing we'll have to find out is TD Bank will even do that.
True.
They might want, might want monthly payments or whatever.
So, if you could have Ted get that breakdown of three, three payments. To Kerry and then ask Kerry to check with TD Bank, cuz and then anybody else like Heritage Family should be, yeah. Um, that would be, I'm sure we can do better.
I'm sure they can make, work with the McGoverns and make the payments, do we have to do?
Oh, sure, yeah, McGovern doesn't care, they're gonna get paid.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's financing this.
And that's to facilitate the appreciation fund, right?
Yes, that's work. Right. We, uh, last week we moved in, we moved, we ain't moving, we moved the desk from downstairs, put them in the squad room, assembled. Looks, I don't think that looks pretty good.
They do, they're big, these, these are the ones we got for free.
Right, the free ones.
Yeah, we like that.
They're.
Are they adequate for your needs?
They're more than adequate for the officer's needs, I wish I had one in my office, but it would take up the whole office.
I did notice you got the smallest office in that place.
I did. I did.
True. Me doing more traffic.
That's all I have.
Okay, um, you'll be able to attend Friday's walkthrough inspection?
What time is anyways?
Well, it's eight to noon, but there, I believe, two things that's going on, one is the owner. Um, walk through with the, the plumbing is the big one and those were the folks that couldn't make it, so to see where stuff is. And then they're doing the certificate of occupancy inspection at same day, cuz that was scheduled for that day, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna be a few hours there going through. Um, yesterday, they did the punch list with um, the, the. Electrical plumbing site people, architect, and I didn't hear anything of. Any bad, the, the lighting in that place is overly thought, oh, somebody overthought the lighting. It's what I, best I can do it, like the lights outside are supposed to like dim at times and then be brighter and it's like. You know, they were trying to minimize the impact on the um. Neighbors and stuff, but I, I thought the lighting package, the way it is and the way it's working. Is excellent, except for that one sign out front and they have, nobody's come up with quite the clue what to do with that yet.
Yeah, you need one more light.
Well, it's gonna take something different, the front side where it says public safety, that, that wasn't. Those lights were never intended to light those letters, they were intended to light the front of the building.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's what they were and the uh.
You see pub?
Yep.
Build.
Um, to some extent, they would often, almost be better if they were off at night. Cuz then you wouldn't see anything and it wouldn't look like it does, um, and to change those letters. The way they're fastened to the building and then get letters similar to what's on the tower. You don't know if the fasteners are gonna, and they, they adhere those cuz it's a metal siding. And their concern is that when they try to pull those standoffs, studs that hold them off, the siding's coming with it. So we have to think about something there, but I don't know too much about that, but.
The architect may have some ideas.
Well, they had an idea of us, like it's an LED, they're eight foot strips. And it showed they, and I had some pictures and we'll have to get them from Ed, that showed the um. Over in Bridgewater, they put them on and it kind of to light up the sign and, and that might, the, the big thing out front is to try to not make any. Thing that's gonna be offensive to the neighbors.
I agree.
Um, the lights on the, three lights out in front of the apparatus bay, um. Electrical engineer said they were supposed to be on like a twenty or thirty percent all the time and then when a vehicle drives in, they come on to hundred percent. Not sure what that's about because it's nice if they come on when you guys pulling lights up the front, but you're, most of the areas are pretty well lit. Um, another thing they talked about, the lighting, is that when these guys show up at, you know, they come back from a call. And it's at night when the door's open, the lights come on and there's some wiring through the relays and I was. JJ was like shaking his head and I was like, what? They're motion sensitive lights in the building, when the door moves, the lights are coming on, whether they're wired or not. And that's just one more thing to go wrong and I, I hope I didn't speak out of turn, but I said, I think they'll be fine the way they are. But I don't know why this is so, the, the lighting is like, they, they had even talked about the lightings in apparatus bay being on all the time. And I said, huh, well, I said, no, they don't need to be on, they're, they're concerned about break-ins or vandalism or whatever and it's. You drive into that yard and, see, personally, I like it better the way it is because if it's dark. And you don't understand the lighting and you drive in there to do something, the lights come on, that's probably the best deterrent, they're leaving.
That's right.
Yep, and if they break into that building.
For light out.
The lights are coming all on, and if you don't know what you're doing, you can't shut them off.
This electrical engineer has cost us over a quarter million dollars extra.
Yeah.
For this building and over engineering and wrongful engineering.
Yeah, and you know, it's just, and it's very, and this seems to be the.
Is that, is the architect on top of that, I mean?
Well, no, because they don't, they have to go with what, which, they, they're not experts in each field, so they just make sure everything is done and. I tried to, and I don't know if the fellow I talked to was the guy that actually designed it, but. We had some pretty lengthy discussion and one of the things that's come up, and I shall talk about it now because it's not a great situation. That building, three phase, six hundred amp electrical service, two hundred thousand watt generator parked on the back. The building was designed and engineered and laid out. With all the proper wiring to run the fire pump when the power goes out. And the switching mechanism, cuz it has its own feed from the pole, fire pump has to have a separate feed. And they ran that yesterday or the day before. Uh. The fire, in the long and short of it, when the power goes out, Irene, power down, generator comes on, the fire pump is not energized and it will not run.
They, they ordered the, the sprinkler control panel got ordered without the transfer switch.
Without the transfer switch, so.
The prints say it needs to be in there. They also ordered a fire pump that is, will not flow enough. To flow for the sprinkler systems in the building, so they have to get a new fire pump, cuz the fire pump's not in there.
The, right now, they're running the sprinkler system will be runoff from the um truck fill pump, which is what this. State allowed us to do to occupy the building.
That's a temporary measure.
It is, and then when the right fire pump comes, um, and it is, this fire pump.
Do we have an issue of whose responsibility?
Well, this is one of the, this is one of the things, when we get to paying for. The final payment, the, the money, we, we have to get this taken out, I don't know who. Didn't, I, I'm guessing the sprinkler people didn't get the right. Controls for the electrician to wire in. The wiring is in, and, and the controls need to have its own. Transfer switch, cuz if, I mean, it defeats the whole purpose of the fire pump and the system, it's a generator. And I, and, and the state said it's okay if it's not running, I said, well, the state might be particularly happy, but I know five people. That are overseeing this that are not gonna allow this to go this way. And I made it pretty clear when I was there Monday, that this has gotta be resolved.
Um.
The other part of this is if it had been engineered from the beginning to not have to get tied to the generator. We would, would have probably saved about fifty thousand dollars in buying a smaller generator.
Generator is actually sized for the load or the, the coming in, but the load on the building is nowhere's near. Generator is actually sized for the load, or the the coming in, but the load on the building is nowhere is near. What the service is, it's a six hundred amp service, you could run a foundry, a machine shop, you know.
This this station over here, two hundred amp service, like what's in your house?
Four.
They they put two two hundreds in there?
That's four.
I thought they put two in.
Yeah, so anyway, we will have to be on top of it.
Is that something we point out on Friday, or is that something that's already on the list?
I I talked with Sean about it, I talked with JJ about it, and I'm, and it's going to be up to. I think DMS has to square this with their sub.
Like that.
I I believe Southern Vermont Sprinkler.
I don't think we need to.
Right, Southern Vermont Sprinkler should be the ones that have to bear some of the the. Bro, this, they ordered the sprinkler pump, and they ordered the controls, and they didn't order the controls that are compatible with what needs to be there. And and so, even though, like I say, the state has no issue with this.
Well, but they're not the ones paying the bill.
Well, this is what I said, you know, we've got a, we've got, you know, a couple of three million dollars worth of fire equipment in there.
Yeah.
God knows how much police equipment in there, now the building's going to be, you know, you get some. Weird mother nature thing, and we don't have power for a week.
Yeah.
It it's not acceptable to have that building unprotected, so we'll get to the bottom of it, but that's, that's the biggest thing that came out of.
Are you going to be there Friday?
Yeah, I'll swing up Friday.
Good, thank you, alright.
And then I did talk to JJ about the sewer pump, which is the transfer pump at the pumping station. And so they're working on, I said, you don't need to worry about it, you know, in the cold weather, but as soon as it warms up, we'll figure out a cost. Because I would like them to do the work, run the lines out, run them down, since he is familiar with the building. And he's well on top of it, what needs to be done.
Is that an extra, or is that part of this?
No, that that part is on us, that was, that was not anything we asked for in this whole thing, so that'll be a.
Okay.
Because if that sewer pump, transfer pump doesn't work, then then the building.
I have some brand new sewer pumps.
Well, the thing is, is, you know, it flows down into that pumping station, state police and then, uh. A motor vehicle, everything goes in there, well, if I'm right, Bill, we take care of that, right? That's us. Okay, so, so, um, in the event of a long term outage, that pump doesn't run. Your building can't be occupied once that, um, pumping station's.
Can we use our generator?
Well, yeah, that's the thing, so the the thing is, but you have to run the wires from the public safety building down the road to feed it. Right now, it's run.
Have to go and do, have we got a conduit already?
There's conduit, there's conduit under the driveway.
Okay.
I I took care of that, I with, right at the beginning, JP and I got right on that, right at the beginning. I explained it out, and they ran two lines, two conduits out there, so we're we're all good there through the pavement.
Good. Well, thanks for staying on top of this.
That's what we are.
Alright, oh, yeah.
You got me, right?
Sorry.
Now, it's your building, so I want you to know what's going on.
We did, yeah, okay.
You and Chris.
Okay, uh, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director, does not have a new building.
I have a cold one.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
I don't have much, uh, basketball, it's kind of winding down, by the time next we meet, we'll almost be done. Um, and that means that it's just closer to cutting grass, which is awesome at this point.
You know, it's funny, all summer long, it's like a pain in the neck, and then it goes to winter.
But it's not, though.
Can't wait, well, can't wait to just be out and.
Cut some of that.
And do stuff, just be outside, do stuff in that regard, exactly. Um, Mary did mention that, uh, we met with, um, I'm drawing a blank, Barbara. Uh, a couple of weeks ago about the Pocket Park. Um, to be perfectly honest, I hadn't paid a tremendous amount of attention, because it just seemed like it's been going for a long, 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 long time. But we spent a couple hours on a Wednesday or whatever day it was, going over the final proposal, or not the final proposal, for our initial proposal that we had to. Put forth for the grant, and, um, we came up with some different ideas at the time that we will look at. Moving forward, it's a wonderful idea, um, and hopefully it will get used, um, once it's constructed. But we did talk about a couple of different making changes or this or that, and when we get to that point, we can, we decided we would. Talk about it more and walk through it.
We're going to apply for the grant, actually, I thought about this when I was in that meeting with area select board members. And the discussion was around getting grants with so many restrictions, it's actually cheaper to build it without a grant. Because then you don't have to do the re, so we might be in that position with this.
Yeah.
Um, and we can always, you know, apply for the grant if we get it, and the conditions are too onerous, we can say, no, we did that once about. Four years ago on some grant that we applied for, and we said, no, no, we're not going to do it. So we we don't want to go into the grant process, you know, with that attitude, but it is something that we need to keep in mind. Um, anyway, it's, it, you know, it's a an area of town that will be used, I think. Um, there, the first phases of it will be to, uh, to kind of a handicapped accessible pathway. Over to the overlook area, which is basically the old, um, Simon's Avenue that went to the bridge abutment. And then the bridge, well, there's no bridge now, so, anyway, it's one of those that we're, you know. If we get the grant, it won't cost us a whole lot, and if we don't get the grant, then we can piecemeal it, so there we are.
Yep, um, other than that, I I don't have anything else, unless you guys have something for me, just hope for warmer weather.
Okay, so, anybody have questions for Mike?
Alright, cool, thank you. Mike, do you want to stick for an executive session on, um? Yeah. Rec liability issue.
Yeah, we can do that.
Whatever you want to do now, or maybe we're going to go through this list quickly, because Dave's on vacation.
Okay.
We don't have to talk about sewer pipe, maybe I'm hoping.
I don't know.
No, we're talking.
We already talked about a sewer pump, so.
We're talking about, he might be there, I'm not sure if he's there.
Oh, no. Okay, so if you can hang for a bit, and then if you get ready to go, because you need to be elsewhere, let us know.
Yeah, because I'm still in the middle of it too, but I do want to bring you up to speed, just so that we're aware.
So, we'll call Mike back if we, when we go into executive session, uh, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner, is a, no, he's on vacation. Um, is Ben's there, is Ben going to say anything, or?
Ben and Chris want to tell us what they did?
Yeah.
I can tell you.
Chris, yeah.
Scraped snow and spread salt.
I can.
Okay.
I can talk to today's events.
All right, why don't you do that?
So we were, we got BP wastewater back down from Colchester today to try to jet. The South Main Street sewer line from the uphill side, because we ended up getting stuck on the downhill side. Because the bottom of the pipes rotted, and the jetter nozzle actually dropped out of the pipe and got stuck in there at one point in time.
Oh.
They ended up hooking the pipe to the truck and backing the truck up and ripping the jetter back out, because it was a four thousand dollar nozzle, and they kind of wanted that back. So they brought down a pump truck to pump the manhole down, and then we tried to jet from the uphill side, and we got. Seventy feet out into route, well, towards Route Seven, which is about two feet from the fog line on the east side. And we came up against something hard, and they can't get through, and they tried two different, they tried a cutting bit, and they tried a piercing bit. And they couldn't get through it, um, so they seem pretty confident that the pipes collapsed or shifted. Some, there's something, it's not right, um, so we're going to have to make a meeting next week. And hope we can get Derek on Zoom from V-Trans, and, uh.
You're going to have to dig the road up.
Yeah, and that's where.
This is.
Well, everybody else digs up Route Seven, I don't see why we can't.
And this is starting to get to the verge of emergency, because we're. Discharging raw sewage out of a manhole lid every single day.
Okay.
So we really need to get on this before it becomes more of an issue.
Hopefully, the state will be cooperative.
Yeah, so if we could put a meeting together with us and Dave and Derek and, uh, Robert Clark. Yeah, I know, if if you maybe tell them that this is kind of gone to emergency type, got to get something figured out here, that'd be. Yeah, and get that put together for next week, so we can keep this moving.
We do have, um, the water sewer funds, yeah.
Yeah, we have funding, it's just figuring out what what the state's going to let us do and how we're going to go about it.
Don't tell the state how much we have in the water sewer.
I mean, the the biggest issue is getting, I mean, we may not be able to wait.
Yeah.
This this isn't like we may be able to wait for warm weather, this this may have to be a cold weather.
Yeah.
And digging pretty close to, well, eight, nine feet or better.
Yeah, we started calculating, it's twelve to fifteen right in that area.
Yeah, because it's, the banks are so low, I know where Route Seven comes up.
We got a hundred and thirty feet from the downhill side, and we made it seventy from the uphill side. And the pipe's like two hundred, two hundred and ten feet long, so there's a very short section that's actually causing a true issue. So emergency, we could dig it up, replace that section of pipe, and get, get it good for the rest of the winter.
But you know that, I I saw the, the camera when it went in, and boy, there's, I mean, it's teeny opening there.
Yeah, the rest of the, the rest of the pipe now is pretty well open from when we jetted from the downhill side. So it's that, just that short section that's really grown down now.
Thing's too small, right?
It's too small, but you're looking at, I mean, you're looking at a big construction project to dig the entire road, and we might not. Might not be able to put that together all at once.
Okay, well.
Might have to fix a, you know, make a repair for right now.
Or maybe go from the manhole to where the damage is now.
Yeah.
And then try to figure out how to do the rest afterward, if we can get it, you get that flowing.
Was that, you say downhill side, is that the west side?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the Aspen downhill side.
Yeah, that's where they changed those couplings and made the street shot.
The elbows out, as I say.
Yeah, and I mean, these guys brought down pretty much the best equipment in the industry to try to get through this thing, and it's not happening, so. We're kind of out of options.
All right, well, thank you very much for overseeing that. Okay, uh, Marcia Choffey, Town Head Lister.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Marcia.
Um, a couple of things tonight, um, we have sent off to, um. Christie Wright, our request for proposal for appraisal services for the townwide reappraisal. Um, she has sent back to us some suggestions on our, uh, bid proposal. Which Marie and I will be getting together to, uh, look it over. Uh, but other than that, um, the only other thing I have is, um, Bill gave me the. Contract for the CAI, um, mapping, which I have no problem with. It's, uh, pretty much standard.
All right, this is tax map maintenance proposal for the town of Rutland.
Right.
It's from CAI Technologies, Littleton, New Hampshire, um, this is. Proposal, uh, let's see, thirty one hundred dollars for the MFGIS maintenance services under this contract. And then additional twenty dollars per building added or changed. Um, and is this what we paid last year as well?
I, I believe it's about the same.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, and we've budgeted for it, so is there a motion from anyone?
Approve.
Motion's been made to approve the contract with the AI, is there a second? Two seconds, all right, discussion.
We all have to sign it, it's only four slots.
That's okay, I'll sign at the very bottom, it's nice to have, so if all are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, aye, and anyone opposed? No, motion carries, and I'm going to sign at the bottom.
You just don't know your name first, for once.
You got it, it's reverse alphabetical order today.
It's not going to change anything.
Okay, um.
So, as I stated earlier, um, we have, um, submitted our request for proposal for the. Uh, appraisal services for the town of Rutland, um. Uh, we, we did, uh, we did, um, speak with Christie. Uh, our district advisor, and there were only a very few areas that she, um, suggested that we make. Uh, some approval, other than that, we're just about ready to go. Even though we didn't get our, you know, letter, we won't get our letter until July of this year.
And Marcia, didn't you send us around, yes, you did, you sent us around, and Bill shared it with us, um, the. Um, CIA information, the the two.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
So, and and so if you have any questions, Marcia, you can ask her about that as well.
There is an updated, you saw in your packet.
I did see it.
There was an error in our calculation, and they sent us an updated sheet.
Because they left on personal property.
I like that.
Yeah, this is personal property is actually going to be handled by our office, all of it.
Yep.
Which is going to be, it's going to be a lot.
Yeah, okay, thank you, this goes in the. Okay, um. Any questions for Marcia about, um, the letter that was in our packet? Property evaluation and review, thank you for that, I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Being kept informed on this, this is good. All right, anything else for us, Marcia?
No, I guess not.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll move on to Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Hi, Chris.
A couple of things tonight, uh, you should have an application for a new member to sign. Uh, he's a senior in high school, town resident. Uh, we met with him a couple of weeks ago, and he'll think we'll be, he'll be a good fit, so if you guys could approve that, that'd be good.
Hi, this is Clyde Pelkey.
Yep.
Um, and is he a? He's a a full firefighter, he's not a junior firefighter, correct?
Wait, I'm not sure if he's eighteen quite yet or not, I can't remember when his birthday is.
March two oh seven, not yet, okay.
Too short.
Okay, soon, all right. Um, so is there a motion? Second, motion is made and seconded to approve, um, Mr. Pelkey is a firefighter, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Sharon's aye, none opposed, so go ahead and sign, all of us. I'm going to sign at the bottom again, because that was really fun last time, go. Okay, um, Chris, are you going to be able to join us on Friday for the walkthrough?
Yes, I will be there.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming too, um, to all of the, you know, um, department heads and their deputies and assistants. Because, um, there was a holiday that we were all there on Monday, um, but it was a good showing nonetheless, so we'll. This thing close to done, yes.
Perfect, uh, my second thing is, I told you a couple of weeks ago, the, our new pickup came with the wrong rack on the back of it. So they're coming Monday to put the new one on and take the old one off, so. Uh, we will be sending a check with the guy that is coming to do the work. So just to let you know, there'll be a check going out of that depreciation fund for the, for the pickup.
Okay, I think we approved that at the last meeting, didn't we?
I believe so, yeah.
Do we get to keep the rack, the old rack?
I doubt it.
Yeah, well.
If it was any good, we would have kept it on there, so.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, my third thing.
Yep.
I don't know how many months ago it was when you guys approved to buy a couple of things for the new building. I handed in the list and have not seen anything of it. So just for example, like, we need a set of rolling stairs to get upstairs to that mezzanine. Um, we asked for A E D, um, a hazmat cabinet, and some of this I bought already out of our own budget, just so it would get here. Um, so I didn't know if I could give you, give the list back to to Billy or he could order this, the rest of it for me. Or well, how do you want to do it? I mean, it was approved to come out of the capital improvements. But I've been, I've been buying a couple of things out of our fire budget, just so it would get here on time.
Um, I'm, I know you need, I'm, I'm not questioning the need here. Um, I was looking for the list. I was. We've got the extractor vent, we've got the, uh, the signs with V M S, we've got the washer dryer. Um, we did have a lump of thirty one thousand two hundred dollars in additional items needed for inside the building. Was that part of, were those things you mentioned part of that?
I, I believe so. I don't think the thirty two thousand was for the whole, or all for fire. Our stuff is kind of small, like some office chairs for the two offices and, uh, the stairs to get upstairs, the two computers I already bought. Um, the metal cabinet for like paint and stuff like that, I already bought, uh, couple file cabinets I did not buy yet.
Uh, you're gonna need those.
I can, I can write up a new list if, you know, if, if you guys approve Billy to order it for me, that would be. We can get it done.
Yep.
Okay.
That's probably the best thing to do, Chris.
Yeah.
Get that stuff coming.
Yes, please. Um, I'm going through and nothing is standing out like you've described, so I think it's in one of the lump sums.
I think it was.
Yep. Okay, so please do and, uh, what, which ones do you want to get ordered?
Um, I'd like to get the office chairs ordered, the file cabinets, the rolling stairs.
Get the stairs.
The A E D, but I I remember some talk about the A E Ds. I I know, I don't know if Dave needed one or Mike needed one, but that you guys were gonna, or the town was gonna get a couple. I don't know if that was already ordered or not.
Do we get those already?
No, we, one was for Mike and one was for Dave.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess we need to get another one coming up.
We do.
With, with a box.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rolling stairs, file cabinets and chairs. Estimated cost?
I have no idea.
Back in your notes somewhere, right, Chris?
Yeah. I don't think it could be that too expensive.
I think we've approved it, but it was a bunch of stuff I remember doing.
Yeah, well, let's, let's just say for the sake of my record keeping here, um, the thirty one that those items may be purchased out of what we had set aside as the thirty one thousand.
Yeah.
For, I think it probably was.
I think that's where it came from. There's like twenty something thousand for the police and then there's, I don't know, eight or ten or something for the fire.
Yeah. On that list, that cascade, so you might be a little short on your numbers, but.
That was not part of the thirty one.
That was a stand alone item.
Um, let's stairs, rolling stairs.
You got a list of what he needs.
Okay, is that a motion then? Rolling stairs, office chairs.
I think we already moved on, didn't we?
Yeah, I thought, sorry, I wasn't paying attention. All right.
Yeah, I thought we moved for the thirty thousand, I think we.
Yeah.
Okay.
We voted. We just need to.
It just didn't get ordered because it was like.
All right.
When do we need it?
Well, let's, let's be clear and let's just make a motion to say that this is coming out of the thirty, thirty one. Okay, motion's made.
Second.
Rolling stairs, office chairs, um, rhymes, um, file cabinets.
Yeah, that hazmat cabinet.
A E D.
You know, there's a few items.
Hazmat cabinet.
Yeah. What else do, have you already purchased, Chris?
Um, I bought, let's see, I bought two computers, I bought a metal cabinet, not the hazmat one. One just for like paint, not for gasoline and stuff, um.
That red one that's in there, that's the hazmat one, right?
That's for like paint and we're gonna put like the def fluid in it and.
Okay, yep. I saw that one yesterday.
Okay, so motion's been made to get the rolling stairs for the mezzanine, the office chairs, the file cabinet, the A E D, the hazmat cabinet out of the thirty two some odd that we had set aside, okay?
Yeah, because some of that'll be reimbursed.
So motion's made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, five zero, so go ahead and order.
Yeah, Chris, when you build that stuff you bought from your budget, you could code that to the capital improvement fund.
Okay, I, I, that one I get the bill.
Yep, that way it doesn't ding the, ding your budget lines.
Yeah, perfect.
Unless you want it to. Yeah, actually, if this was stuff he needed anyway.
It's all stuff that was on the list.
Yeah, it's true.
Nobody ever did anything with the list.
We're, we're in some respect, kind of the same as.
You're right.
You know, we know what we needed, just like these companies and subs all noted, but it's like, okay, who's ordering it? And then we find out, oh crap, nobody got it, so.
Um, I, it does say approximately thirty three thousand remaining costs for the outfitting the interior, so that's what we just took the money out of. I kept saying thirty one.
Yeah, it's just like the kitchen appliances that nobody ordered.
Where are we on that, by the way?
Bugs brought that up, I forgot, um.
I have a feeling I'm not glad.
Well, there's a couple of things. We, we went down to, um, used to be Home and Farm there at the end of McKinley, I can't. Rutland Appliance and maybe this. And Dell asked them to go up and measure because we found out that this room is, has to be handicap accessible.
Yep.
So, the, which means the dishwasher is shorter, which means, um, we haven't found anything yet. But there's a little question with the stove. One set of prints says it has to be handicapped, so it's like a drop in stove, there's no oven, so you can wheel your chair under it. And the other set of plans says it's a regular oven, so the way the counters were put on, it is for a regular oven. So we're not sure which one it has to be. Um, and I think that.
I think that's an architect question.
Yeah, so we'll have to ask on Friday, but as of right this second, we haven't ordered any appliances yet. Um, Dell and I were there last night putting some shelves, shelves together and we remeasured everything and, uh, he was gonna try to go talk to them again today. I haven't spoken with him today to see if he made it that far yet, but right now, there's no appliances.
All right, so you'll bring it up Friday, not that they have to ins- buy them and install them, because I don't think that was part of it, but that they have to make sure we know whether it's handicapped accessible stove top or whether we can do a traditional stove and oven.
Right.
Forty four instead of thirty six, they're lower.
They're shorter.
Yeah.
I was talking with Gary yesterday about that.
Okay.
Um, stuff's, for the most part, I believe, Chris, stuff's available, but you're not gonna find it. Some, it'll all have to be ordered. Very few places stock that stuff.
Okay, um, so to avoid having to.
We should really figure out if that was part of the bid or not, too, because we knew it had a kitchen net from the beginning.
We did.
I don't know if the M S is supposed to track down the appliances or not.
Yeah, that would be something we should look into.
Do, before or after we authorize the purchase?
Well, they gotta be ordered.
When I was talking to Gary, he asked if I knew where they were and I'm like, oh, first I'm hearing of it. So I'm assuming they had nothing to do with appliances, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, so we need to figure out whether, and then that was kind of my question early on. It has somebody already, is somebody responsible for them on the V M S side and have they already ordered them? But if Gary's asking, it sounds like the answer is no, at least in their mind.
They, they haven't ordered them, but I don't know who's, who is, who was supposed to be responsible for them. I'm not sure how detailed that whole original description and content, so.
Well, we can ask Friday. I won't, I won't order anything until we talk to them on Friday.
And, and that's not going to affect whether you guys can move in or not.
No.
Right. Oh, that's another question I have. If, if everything passes with the state on Friday, um, can we put the trucks and our gear in there Friday night or over the weekend, or is it still theirs until?
According to what I understood yesterday when I talked to Gary, is that i- if the state okay's this with their inspection and the certificate of occupancy is issued. Um, you guys will have the, you know, I don't know what this formal thing with the keys, but I'll end up with the keys and you'll end up with the keys in the building, George, and you can move in.
Well, except we then need to alert League of Cities and Towns that we're doing it. So we absolutely need to know and let our insurer, are you gonna be at the walkthrough as well?
We should know by noon or thereabout.
Okay, so if Bill will be responsible for at least alerting League of Cities and Towns. Okay, thank you. Um, we want to make sure.
That was my understanding from him.
And this is not an indication that everything is fine. This is only the yes, you can move in and we'll figure out. You know, the punch list, we'll get the punch, and who knows, there'll be other stuff once people are actually in there working.
In, there, there'll be things that are gonna come up. One of the things I identified was in the apparatus bay covers, because it's a wet location, they're all G F I outlets, but there was a discre- dis- discussion as to what type of covers to put on them. Whether they're in use covers, which are different than just weatherproof covers. So like if they had something they needed plugged in, in the apparatus bay, you'd have an in use cover and I think that's what they're gonna do. But those were things that were pointed out, so they were just waiting for the electrical inspector to say, okay, let's see what you gotta do.
Okay.
There was a bunch of painting I noticed that still had to be touched up here and there, too.
Yeah.
There's the outside door which had holes drilled in it, but nothing attached to it. I think that was the punch code.
Lockset.
Lock, yeah.
I think the, the fire department entry keypads, touchpads are on, and they're using a pass key for now. And then I believe we have to program them in. I, I think that'll be, that'll be.
They use locks that we've never used before, so I don't know what, how to program those.
Okay.
We didn't get the same locks.
Are they outdoor locks?
I tried to get that question answered about a year ago and was not able to find out. And the locks they use aren't, aren't even the same company that we use to keep for everybody else, so.
Because that's all one computer system for.
Right, so that may be a good.
Gonna be.
Outdoor locks, we need to ask about that.
Oh, that's.
Our architect's gonna be there, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Like, these are really simple questions that should have been answered.
Yep.
Yes, but these are also very small details and they might not have been in some of the specs.
We have a clerk of the works for.
Well, the, part of that job is to oversee that the building is built the way it was designed, not to come up with the designs. So in the process of designing the building, and we did this with center, was to specifically identify what we wanted for that door, how the things are gonna be, the lock sets that we got, plus using the ones from the other station. We bought the original ones and they were internal door locksets. And we used them on the outside and it didn't work, so we moved those to the inside and made sure the outside ones were, um, the right ones, so. If it wasn't specified in that design of the building and the, and the concept of designing the building, then it was left to the contractor, um, you're gonna have the, you know, it just says coded or keypad, but not, you have to, we had to specify exactly what we have, the ones on this building, the one on the fire. Because that was this whole rigmarole we went through before, about four, three or four years ago, to get everybody on the same page. I believe highway, town office and center.
Seven, eight years ago now.
Right?
Highway's next.
Yeah. They don't have the same one as the other two yet?
No.
Okay, but we were trying to get everybody with the same lockset, buying them all usually through Royals. And they take the same computer program and it's easy, so you have that and you just go in and you talk to it and in two minutes, everybody's in there. So there's something we'll have to.
Because when you change firefighter passcodes, you just take the computer to center, download them, take it over to McKinley, download them and you're all done, instead of having to manually punch them in on this can, this system and then manually punch them all in on this system. And we have thirty firefighters with a lot of passcodes.
Um, so we have identified the proper locksets that we need, right?
I, I know what we've been using, yeah.
Yeah, I just hope they fit the doors. Yeah, now that. Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it resolved.
All right, um, is J P attending Friday?
I, no, he's, he won't be there.
Is he on the call today?
No.
No.
I think he's just kind of left this to me.
Well, that's part of the, that's part of the question.
J P's in the sand.
So do we need?
Clearly.
Do we need to disauthorize him and authorize who is our clerk of the works from here on in?
I can be. I'm not sure what I'm doing, but I'll, uh.
You're on top of things. Is there a motion?
Here and available, so.
Chris.
Yes.
He's still on. You wanna be clerk of the works of this thing? You know the inside and outs.
Yeah.
Do I?
Yeah, just to finish up stuff. I mean, I'll do stuff with you, but.
At, at your chief salary.
I, I can help out. I, Dell's been doing a ton of work there, so I can.
Okay.
So let's deputize the both of them, though.
Which both? You've got three people now.
Chris and, Chris and Dell.
Okay, what, what?
What, what? Can you just review what precisely is happening Friday and what needs to be? You know, what, what the clerk of the works is, needs to do at this point.
Fri- Friday is the inspection by the Department of Fire Safety for the certificate of occupancy.
And what they're gonna be carrying.
Plus the education of the chiefs, yeah, the owners of the building as to the systems within the building. So there's a two part.
So, so it's gonna go from eight until twelve?
That's right.
Okay.
And there'll be, it's a kind of a two part thing, the, the, that original lock, that original twentieth, what we were supposed to do. Um, the biggest, uh, system in that building is the plumbing, and the plumber couldn't be there. And, you know, but they're gonna be there to point out to Ed and Ted and anybody from the P D and Chris and Dell and Mike and anybody else that's there.
Okay, but I, I still think we need to have a clerk of the works. My motion is that Joey becomes the clerk of the works, because Chris has got his hands full. And they, if they all can feed into one person, then we're better off if you get.
I think Chris, Chris and Dell have been there almost every day, putting in work on this, keeping things straight. They've been working with the project manager. They've been working with the project manager, making, make sure things are squared away. I mean, they've, they've been doing it, so.
So, uh, do you think they should be the clerk of the works?
I, I believe they're more than capable. Feel like we need to have one person.
Chris, Chris has a lot of building experience in his present and past lives with different sized buildings, whether it's commercial, the residential, it's well within its purview to keep track of things, if he's willing to do it, of course.
I, I agree one person. Yeah, because right now we, it's sort of like all over the place.
And, and.
The potential is there.
Yeah.
Is, so is there a motion somewhere?
They made a motion.
You did for Joey.
Yep.
Is there a second to?
I don't care which one. I mean, I just assumed.
I second it.
Wait, Chris, what, what, what would your wish be?
Uh, Joey's got more time than I do and, you know, if Dell and I are still allowed to go there every day.
Everything that goes on.
Um, all right, so motion's been made.
I'll second the motion.
For, uh, Joe, seconded, made by Sharon, seconded by Matt. Okay, um, discussion? If not, all in favor of Joe Donardo as our new clerk of the works, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, fair enough. And, and having reviewed the ethics thing, that was appropriate on your part to do.
Don't bring a shotgun up my driveway.
No, no, I've been kind of doing it, Karen, I don't mind. Basically, the job left now is just to communicate between V M S and the board. And it's kind of keep it to one person, so everybody, I think, will run into them.
Right, so if they can all go to you, if there's an issue.
And anything the fire department or the police find there they need, I get to be the intermediary and we'll, we'll get it taken care of. I was not under the, I was not aware, and I don't know if anybody even thought about the door locks to make sure they match. I was not under the, I was not aware, and I don't know if anybody even thought about the door locks to make sure they match the rest of them.
Well, the last time at the other station, they screwed up the locks from what I understand. It went outdoor locks.
I think part of that was on us, what we wanted in, when Royals, or no, it wasn't Royals that did those, it was Molten Glass. Provided them the other time. Countryside, was it countryside? They were, weren't sure what we wanted, but I think we were. But we've, we've got through these.
I think along this process, we've had a lot of questions asked and non-answered by our clerk of the works. And that's what kinda led us to some of these issues. Is we have people asking over and over again what these issues are and they're never getting transferred over to VMS to give responses back.
Yep. Yep, I agree.
We'll, we'll get through the rest of this and.
All right, so that also takes care of public safety building update unless there's anything else on that. I think that.
We beat it around twice now, so we're good.
And, and Chris, anything more for Chris, or can we let him go and put Carrie in this place? Yeah.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Good night, or how, how are you?
Oh, we're good.
All right, um, so a good segue, I guess, into my portion of, um, reporting out. I have very short things other than what's in front of you. Um, just wanted to give, um, uh, each one of you the, um, numbers up to this point for the public safety building. The, um, first page and, and this is a side note, Mary, I handed your page to you and Kurt, I handed your page to you, so I, I hope you brought them because I just gave you the second page. Um, but the rest of you have both pages, one and two. But the first page is the page that's going in the town report because that is the, um, it goes to the end of the fiscal year. And then, um, on the second page is the, um, amount of money we spent to date minus what's in the orders today. Um, and then what the projection will be, um, knowing the things that we know. Obviously, there's a lot of unknowns right now as far as what needs to be purchased for the inside. But knowing like certain, um, we know VMS has a balance and we know that, um, we're paying the interest on the bond and we know, um, what we've already paid out from July first to here. So those are some numbers for you. Um, so just take a look at those.
Uh, Carrie, I, I did have one and that's, I know as the ARPA funds were sitting, they earned a big chunk of interest. Where is that interest reflected?
In the ARPA funds. We used it all.
Oh, yeah, I figured we'd used it.
Yep, so it's.
Okay, the one, uh, one million, two fifty-three, that includes all of the interest.
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask some questions?
Yep, and Matt's got a few questions.
Okay, so the first page seems straightforward. So then, on the top of the second page, uh, what is that telling us there?
So, um, the little chunk of, um, calculations there is what we are, um, what we've paid out to January, like, um, so we have the amount of money, so the three point two and the one point four in those three figures there. Those match your, um, your page in the begin, uh, the first page. So the one point four is your federal fund that we do not have to pay back. And the three point two is, um, essentially past money and future money that would be like what we've given the town in our taxes. Um, not that we have to, that we have to shell out, it's just we, that's on the taxpayer. Um, the eight twenty-one.
Local share? That's like local shares.
Yeah, like that, that u- ultimately came out of each one of our pockets at some point. Whether it was in the past and it got swept over to capital improvements or it's coming out in future, um, or like this, this current year. Um, the eight twenty-one is what we've already paid for any expenses July first until the twenty-third of January. So that total rate there is how much we've spent on that building. Um, currently, the, um, second group of, um, figures on that second page is what we're going, what we know, what we've already spent and what we're going to spend, um, on this building. So the projection is from everything that we know and what we've already spent. That figure six point six is what the least amount of money that we are going to be spending on this project. To the completion.
I'm still very confused. The three point, I think where I'm really struggling is the three point two million. Uh, so at the top of the second page, it's, well, first of all, a number appears on the first page is taxpayer burden. But on the top of the second page, it's labeled as six thirty twenty-four LTD taxpayer.
Taxpayer burden life to date.
Yeah, okay, but you, but then you, I thought you said it was, it included both the past and a future projection.
Mm-hmm. And then, so what, what are you confused about? Because those figures match the beginning, the beginning page. So basically, you're taking your figures until June and adding what we've spent already from July to now to that figure. So that's all it's doing. Is it's taking the total four point six four four and adding eight twenty-one to it.
Okay. All right. So, all right, so then in the last one, you're just projecting the VMS remainder and the bond interest.
Yep. Yep.
And the bond interest, yeah, which.
I mean, even, what, what I was trying to get to on this is where, where we're gonna be for construction costs on this project. So if we subtract the future bond interest out, we're gonna be, we're gonna be six million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents, construction cost.
Not not all of it, because some of the interior stuff is not really construction costs, like the stove and the refrigerator, so.
Construction cost. Yeah, it's, it's the total cost of the building.
The total cost of the project. I agree with that, but it's not part of the construction because it's just
No.
fixtures that were added to.
What, what I'm getting at is, is we're trying to compare to what the taxpayers are paying for this building. And that's what they're, they're paying six point three plus interest on top of that even. So we're, we're at six point two, 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 nine is what our cost of this building is going to be to the taxpayers.
Total project.
Yeah, which would be your, what, what you would be, have on a ballot as you're not to exceed type number.
Um, a- again, I would subtract out some of the interior stuff that apparently was never part of.
And if it was never part of it, then it's not even in this number yet, if it hasn't been ordered.
Oh, no. Some of these things, I think some of these things were not part of it, but we ordered and we've put them in.
Yeah, that should have been ordered.
I, I'm not disagreeing on that part. I'm not.
The point is, we're well over six million into this thing.
Yes.
I just, just wanted to get that, as we're reviewing numbers, I wanted to make sure we got that number out there.
Okay, and what's? Yes.
Yep.
What's the next step? What do you propose?
There is no next step. It's just ouchies is the next step.
Yes, it is. Keeping in mind, this is not, I mean, yes, the interest is future payments, but the interest was never included as, um, cost to, not to exceed because we knew we were bonding, so you gotta back the interest up.
Back that up.
And I'm glad you did that.
Six two.
And then.
We never actually had a, not to succeed in the ballot anyway.
Yes.
But I'm just trying to put this into perspective.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair.
They know where we're at with this project.
But the other part of it is, we had already set aside some of this money.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we spent it, but the cost in the future to taxpayers is not the whole projected cost because we're already paying.
No, I'm not saying that. Well, I wanted, I want a number on the table, so when somebody comes up to us, at selectmen and say, how much do we have into this?
Yep.
We have a number that we can give them.
That's what we, we think minus the.
I've had quite a few people come up and ask me, how much money do we have into this? And I give them, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, no.
And I don't like, I don't like doing that.
This is good stuff. Okay.
Oh, thank you, Carrie, for putting that second sheet together this afternoon for me.
Yeah, you're welcome. Um, so aside from that, just very quick things. Um, you have a liquor license in front of you for, it says the entry, but really it's, um, Sanoco the one that, um, Chuck was in charge of on. So they're asking for their approval. It's just a renewal.
This is one we can all sign. Uh, this is for, uh, it's tobacco substitute endorsement and tobacco license. And this is for Sanoco Route Seven South. Is there a motion? Oh, and this is, and we're all okay according to the chief. Is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, uh, please say aye.
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 Aye, aye. Okay, we're all good. And we can all sign.
Um, and I sent the, so yesterday was the deadline for, um, anyone that wanted to be on our town meeting ballot. Um, so I waited and I put in the, um, uh, the draft into our company to make the ballot today. Uh, so that should be ready soon and then I'll have to order it. Um, it's always a crunch time during this time because they don't give us very much time with deadlines to get, uh, to get absentee ballots out, especially if people want them down in Florida. But we'll try our best. Uh, the town meeting is on the fourth of March. It's a Tuesday and it starts the night before, um, with a discussion about each budget. So, um, if you can make it, that would be great. I will put a warning out there by Friday. I have to have that hung up. So that was just a quick reminder that that's coming up. Um, and then the last thing is, I was made aware that our, um, dog registration, uh, rates are increasing or they did increase January first, but not by much. We're ver- we're very reasonable. Um, so it went from a dog that's been fixed on time. It was nine dollars. It's now eleven. Still not too bad at all. And if the dog is not fixed and it's on time before April first, it's thirteen, it was eleven, so it just went up a couple dollars, not a, not a huge deal.
And, and that was the state, right? That wasn't us.
Yeah, that's the state. That wasn't us. You're correct. So, um, just another, uh, public service reminder to get your dogs registered. If you're listening to this, uh, again, I'm still at very, very low numbers and I know there's more dogs out there than that. So, um, I did have a conversation with, it was an informal conversation that maybe we can have further down the road, maybe there should be some repercussions. I'm not sure how the law works. And again, that's, I had an informal conversation, so I'd rather talk to the right people and maybe we can get those people in and, and registered, um, as needed. But that's all I had tonight.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you very much for all of your work putting the town report together and for these numbers too on the public safety building. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
On the dog license, did I have this conversation with you or was, with somebody else about the, um, the carrot approach? You have, if people aren't registering their dogs because they can't afford the rabies vaccine, the possibility of having a free rabies clinic, um, to have a vet call it, uh, come in and the town possibly pay for the cost of the vaccine and get the dogs, um, taken care of that way. Just, was that anything somebody here mentioned it, or was that from the regional select board meeting too? It might have been the latter.
Yeah, that's the first time I've heard of it.
Okay, all right, just a thought.
Town dogs.
Town dogs, yes, yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else for Carrie? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too, okay. Mike, I don't think is on, Mike Delahanty, okay. Um, John Paul Fagin is not on. Barbara Noise Pulling, there she is. Yay, yay. My homework done, so I can, I can face you now.
Thank you for doing that. Yeah, so, uh, the regional planning commission and the town planning commissioner are hard at work at the, on the final application, um, for the recreational trails program. Even though, um, this is federal money coming through the Federal Highway Commission and it's, it is facing the federal freeze. Uh, Forest Parks and Rec wants to go through the process. The deadline for applications is Friday. It wants to keep that deadline. It wants to keep up the, um, process. It's set up for reviewing those and making decisions and essentially not losing any time. Um, because they think this may be temporary. So, um, in the application process, we're pushing the fifty thousand dollar limit for things that's in, that are included, uh, in the application. And that fifty thousand dollars plus some in kind, um, will get us, uh, three trails. Will improve the trail going to the overlook from the parking lot and improve the parking lot. Will improve the fishing access trail that goes down right to the falls and will add a trail in the woods. Will add some picnic tables. There'll be a, a kiosk. There'll, will be three, up to three historical signs and those will be the ones that are laminated and slanted and, uh, you know, metal posts in the ground. So there should be plenty of room for information and photos on those. Um, the fifty thousand will pay for, um, a landscape person to come in and, and, uh, pick out all the invasives and the, the trail construction. And, uh, there'll be some picnic areas along the trails and the overlook. The town planning commission, um, really wants to make that fence and the overlook as secure as possible. And so we're looking at a heavy duty steel fence there. Um, this is, you know, at where Mary was mentioning the old, uh, highway, uh, state highway that used to go across a bridge, but now just stops at, uh, this overlook area. And so that heavy duty fencing will be steel and, uh, is running about two hundred and thirty dollars per linear foot. Uh, it will be just about forty-two inches high. So it will be, if you will, ADA compliant fencing. So the trail leading up to that, um, and, and leading up to the signs and the kiosks will all be ADA. Uh, so there's no cash, um, needed from the town. Uh, highway crews will help clear the invasive, once, invasives, once they're identified. We're gonna move.
And volunteers, and volunteers.
Okay, okay. And, um, we're gonna move the, um, daughters of American Revolution watering trough that's hidden now, um, in the trees by Business Route Four. We'll move that into the park. And we'll expand the parking lot there off Simons. So, um, so there's town highway crew time there. We'll need some grant administration time. And Cedar, um, is pledging, if you will, three thousand dollars uh, in promotional work and marketing work for this park. uh, in promotional work and marketing work for this park. Uh, once it's, you know, once it's ready.
Can we count that? Can we count that as in time? In time?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Excellent, alright.
So yeah, so that's how it's, that's how it's shaping up. Um, and you know, the, the application is complicated. We'll get it done. We'll get it in. There, it is competitive. Um, but I think that fifty thousand dollars up to, it's about forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollars now. Could be well spent and um, the town will be putting nothing into that. Uh, so hopefully all you folks agree. And you know, if, if there are other things that people want in this park, we can, we can do that later for sure.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? Mike Rowe worked on that application as well. So, yep. Cause it will be a rec area. Mike will be, assuming the budget passes, Mike will be our rec director and that will be one of three parks then. Under the town's jurisdiction, under Mike's jurisdiction. Okay, any questions? Alrighty, any questions for Barbara? I think that's it.
Did I put everybody to sleep? Is everybody asleep now or what?
This is, we were just dealing with very large numbers for the public safety building and this forty-eight, forty-nine thousand is like, yeah, well, okay. So, we're good, we're good.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great evening.
You too. Um, is Larry Delvin Ari on transfer station manager?
No.
Okay. And Bill Sweet, town.
Bill's not here either.
Somebody wake him up.
Enough.
Evening.
Evening.
Alright, so I've got a few things to go through still. Not too bad. Uh, in your packets. Uh, something that I've seen on the radar and, and we really couldn't cover it at the school, so we gotta do it tonight. Uh, number two in your packets is information from the Vermont Ethics Commission. Uh, there are a few things that we have to do, uh, that we, we have to do. Uh, and one of them tonight is to uh, appoint an ethics liaison to the state. That is step one.
I will say that I went on, there's a little, select board members are supposed to take this, so I did. It's a forty-five minute video. We're, we're doing stuff right as we, as we do things and we recuse ourselves and all of that. So it's pretty much just what we're already doing, which is reassuring. But we should take the video. Um, it's, it's not that bad and it does remind us that we need to avoid conflicts of interest. That's kind of the bottom line on the thing.
Bill, can you send us this in an email so we have the live link to?
Yeah.
The training.
Yes. Oh, the, for, for the, yes, I got.
Ethics Commission at Vermont. I was able to find it with not really any trouble.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. Okay, so first is, who do we want as the ethics liaison from Rutland Town to the State Ethics Commission?
Sounds like a job for Bill.
Ed, you want it?
This, it, it, as I was going through this, it was, I, you know, I think, well, I don't know.
They're just looking, it sounded like they were looking for an employee that they could send correspondence through and.
Yeah.
Bill's kind of our point of contact for disseminating information to the.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to authorize Bill Sweet to act as our Ethics Commission Liaison.
There's some reason why that shouldn't be the case, Bill.
It's, it's, it's the desire, it's the time. So I'm not, I don't know what it's gonna take, but there's, there's a lot going on, so it just is. So there's gonna be more, this is gonna involve more meetings later on. So it's whoever does it is gonna be obligated to some of the meetings, which is, which is fine, but.
Been voted in.
Yeah.
Well, not yet. Okay, all in favor of Bill as our Ethics Liaison, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Uh, in, on your desks, um, I had some other information regarding this. There was, there's been, so there's a few things that also need to get done. So step one, so you, it, it's on, on there, you have X one seventy-one preparation checklist for municipalities. So, we have now completed step one. Uh, we have to post a copy of the municipal code of ethics and any of our specific policies on our website. We will do that. Um, I'm, I'm probably gonna have to create a separate page for it, but that's not a huge deal. Um.
Is this our municipal code of ethics?
We don't, we don't have one. So that's conflict of interest.
Okay.
We don't have a code of ethics policy. So, uh, we have to have a com- uh, a complaint investigation ordinance, rule, policy, or procedure. If we don't have one, we have to adopt, we are, we, we must adopt one. Uh, there are some s- there are not really some sample uh, policies, but there are sample complaint forms, which I gave you a copy of. That's for someone to fill out. That's just, and as, that is provided as an example. Um, so we, what we have to do, we have to come up with a uh, complaint investigation, something or other.
But the code is the code, right?
That, that is, that is chapter sixty. Uh, in, in, so it's twenty-two, it's section twenty-two, twenty-four vs. chapter sixty. So that's, that's, you also have a copy of that on your desk. Uh, I think the definitions are a page and a half of the whole thing. Uh, but it talks about conflicts of interest and uh, prohibited conduct. So that's what will get posted. Um, but again, it's like, like Mary said, it's a reminder about how things are supposed to go. Uh, so we will need to, to formally adopt some of these things. The league put out a bunch of measures, but no model policy. I know. All the things about model policies, they don't, they don't have for us. So, uh.
Does the commission have a model policy?
No.
That would be too helpful.
It's really simple. You just make rules and then throw, throw you to the wolves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty normal.
Well, let's put pressure on the league to provide a model.
I'll, I'll see if they have uh, if they have anything. Um, and then it says, so encourage all municipal officers to take the free online training. Required for members of legislative bodies, quasi judicial bodies, chief administrative officers, mayors, town managers, city managers. However, I recommend all municipal officers subject uh, to the statewide municipal code of ethics, take the training. So um, that is, that would broad- broadly apply to most people in, 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 in the town. So, um, it's, maybe that's part of our policy is that we, we say who does the training, but, but we, we do, we, we're gonna need to do that. So um, I certainly, I, I have not done it yet, but I, I certainly will. Um, but yeah, it's, it's.
Painless.
Basically, yeah, it's.
You carry an ass, right?
Um, initially, um, it may be some more, depending upon it, maybe, maybe Susan and Deborah too, but it, cause it, it just depends upon.
The planning commission because they occasionally do subdivision?
Yeah, I mean, it's, 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 there, there's different things. So it's, it's.
Well, BCA.
I don't know.
BCA, yeah, you're right.
So municipal officer or officer or officer means, and it gives a list. But there's treasurer, road commissioner, planning commission members.
Yeah.
Moderators, no, you're in now. Lister or Assister, uh, first constable, department heads, collector, delinquent taxes, clerk, like, it's like, it's everybody. You gotta take it twice.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's.
So do we have a big party some night?
You know, I was.
Have a big, have a big movie watch.
To me, that would be the best way to do this.
Yes.
I'll, I'll bring a beer.
You're supposed to focus on.
Hey, I didn't see that in the ethics thing anywhere about not being able to have beer while watching.
Prohibition on town prop- beer on town property.
Yeah, sure.
But that would be, it may be the most effective way to do it is just
I like the idea.
Bring everybody all together and.
Either here.
Get her down.
We can do it here. I was just thinking, there's, there's the center station.
Center station.
We could do it there better, right?
Yeah.
I was thinking, Folsom's down there, have the little movie theater with nice couches. You got maple Angus, grab a burger, grab some beer.
Stay awake.
You're supposed to be. Grab some beer.
Yeah, it's only forty-five minutes, so.
But that would be the way to do this.
I, I think that's, yeah.
We, if we could schedule a night, meeting night, anybody in the town employee that, and it looks like it's everybody. If you interact with anybody, you're doing anything, or you, you gotta take this. And we just set it up.
It's, it's pretty much everybody, yeah. So when you, I, I did not do the registry. So when you, cause I got an email that you take, you've taken it.
Yes.
So.
I didn't get an email confirming that I'd taken it, but that's why I put you on to make sure, yes.
So when you did your information, did you have to put it individually or did you have to like certify at the end, like I took it? Because if we all do it in the same room together, we can't all put in everybody's name at the same time.
Oh.
Right.
I did it individually.
Okay.
Call them. You're the new liaison, figure it out.
Ask the commission, because they said, call us anytime. So call them and say, we wanna do.
We wanna organize the.
And they said anytime, so midnight, tonight.
Yeah, yeah, fired off.
But the thing is, is this is a proactive approach to get everybody to do it. Cause I can pretty much tell you, unless you drag me in, kick and scream, and I probably not getting there for a while.
You're bait, you're gonna bait me with food if not beer, so.
And I, that's.
Who's catering this?
That's fair.
I couldn't do that.
Are you sure you wanna cater that much?
Oh, maybe, maybe Sharon and I could do a.
There we are.
Just get Josh, get Josh.
Spaghetti and meatballs, how's that?
Okay.
And then antipox.
Might be fun to do something fun.
It would be.
For a change.
Yeah.
Would be. I will start by finding out if there's a method to do it as a group.
Yeah.
And it may, may, we may have to do all at once, but if we can do them in, in, in groups, then maybe we can do that too. So.
Everybody's gonna hate me now because I brought this up.
Right, Mary? We are not doing eight separate meals.
We are not. We're doing one.
We had Kamuta's cater our fire department meeting and it was excellent.
Yeah.
So, there's always.
So are you putting down my food?
Not at all, not at all, but. Worklist for you.
Fine with me.
Uh, okay, so I will.
Thank you.
I will report back when there's more information to report back. Uh, next, uh, in your packet, number three, uh, I received the results, the sewer usage results. You won't talk about as much of the usage, Joe, you noticed that, right? Like, we're getting better about this. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, uh, and went through and matched everybody's usage together. And came out with uh, three properties that exceeded their allocation uh, for last year. Um, and those are the ones, as you look at this, that are highlighted in red. Um, and actually, it's not, not bad. Um, maybe four, maybe maybe four. Um, oh, the jester one we're not gonna do. Yeah. So there's, there's letters here. Uh, there's three letters. It's to Tractor Supply, BMF Detailing, and uh, AEJ Rutland, which is um, the Home Depot Plaza. Alderman's is not over. There, there's part of a shared uh, allocation with other buildings. So it's just, yeah, so. Um, but that, this is our, this is our master list. This is all of twenty twenty-four usage. Um, we have a hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred thirteen gallons left to allocate. And we used three hundred thirteen thousand gallons a day, less than we were allocated, uh, we've allocated out. So we are in very good shape, both sides of this.
Good.
Um.
Bump our allocation up for the public safety building for our own.
We, um, I think they, we'll probably have to. Um, but we can do that. We don't have to buy allocation from ourselves. It just is what it is. So.
Right.
Yeah.
So I will figure it into the.
Yes, it, it is factored into the total, but we don't have to go after ourselves to increase it. So fortunately. Um, so there are three letters here. Um, and if there's no objection, those will go out in the mail tomorrow.
Yeah, I, we don't have to authorize them because it's.
No, it's just a, it's just a, that's, that's where, that's where they are. So, um.
None of them are grossly out of.
Not terrible. Uh, one is uh, eighteen. It's eighteen gallons a day for one. It's a hundred and forty-four for another. And it's eight for a third, because that's went from a zero usage to a actual, to actually occupied building. So.
Okay.
Um, yeah. So that is the. Uh, and number four, uh, Mary, it's what you asked to go in, the memorial door.
Yes, indeed. There is a door circulating in Rutland County. It is a, thank you Jimmy Carter memorial door. There's, it's not a fundraiser. It's just a recognition. It's being done by Habitat of Humanity, or Habitat for Humanity. Because Jimmy Carter was, of course, you know, spent so many years after he was president, working for that organization. The idea is it visited, it visits town halls. It has been in the city. It's been in West Rutland. Um, if we give permission, it will make a stop here and people can sign it just with a message to um, thank you Jimmy Carter. So any objection to having this come visit Rutland, our town hall? Okay, is there a motion?
By motion?
I don't know if we need to do it by motion. Yeah, no? Okay, we'll just have him come visit.
Put the thing in there.
Okay.
Do, do, do you know how to get ahold of the person?
I do.
Okay, then.
Actually.
Excellent. Cause I don't. That one's all yours.
Alright.
Alright, uh, next, number five is the current budget status sheets.
Oh.
Halfway through the year.
For your.
Yeah.
Doing pleasure. Uh, that's all of the things in the packet. And then a couple of things left on your desk. Um, there is, we received today uh, the letter uh, for us to request reimbursement on the latest quarter of the grant for the Route Seven North sidewalk. So Mary have original in the folder there. Uh, invoices, there, there was two invoices, one, one we paid back in October, uh, and one we got today. Uh, and that's, the October one was the um, contractor invoice for a lot of their work. And then uh, the one today was for the regional planning commission for Stephanie's work. Total fourteen nine fifteen ninety-three minus what we're, will contribute. And so we're requesting eleven thousand nine thirty-two back from the state.
Yep, um, there's, there's more information here attached to.
There's a lot.
The main thing. So if anybody wants more details, it's right here.
The details of all the invoices.
And.
A whole lot of.
Yep.
Red tape.
Oh, you betcha. I. Federal grants, or at least I think I still do federal grants, hard to tell. Um, is there a motion? And there's only one signature.
Move to approve and authorize the board sign.
Second, motion's made and seconded. Um, for fourteen nine fifteen, this is a reimbursement grant?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We have, we've put the money out.
Discussion. If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, thank you. And uh, you also, the minutes from the personnel committee meeting from yesterday.
Oh.
Uh, and the town report did get to the printer. They have confirmed receipt of it. And Monday I got an email from this supervisor union saying, we had a page that was wrong. Can we change it? We got it changed before they printed the proof, so there's no additional cost to us likely. Um, but that had to happen very quickly and.
Good job.
Yes.
So, the town report was in the room and then it was gone. Um, it is all done. Everything was verified and we should have the proof probably this week, maybe beginning of next week. So it'll be out definitely in time, so.
Good.
The date on the outside of it.
Yes. That was like three years ago.
Just got a double check.
That was like three years ago.
I wrote it online with your.
Thank you very much, Bill. Good effort. Um, so the personnel committee met, was it yesterday?
I think it was.
And, well, I'll let Matt make the announcement.
Finished the policy again.
For now.
For now. You're getting it next.
You'll have a copy to review. And then we'll have Teresa and uh, talk to the whole board about all the questions you will have, because you will have read it thoroughly.
Are you guys happy with what you've done, put together, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, there's always a couple of policy questions and, you know, and, and we may very well say, okay, you guys need to make this decision because we didn't want to, but here it is. So, and you can probably guess which ones it may be, so.
Do you have the audiobook version? So I can, I can listen to it?
Well, you guys put a lot of time and effort into rather, what I guess would call it dull subject.
Were there raised, there weren't any raised voices on this, were there?
That was no unnecessary subject, right?
I know. It is.
But if you have it in place, at least you got some place to start.
Yes. Yes. So you'll be seeing it in your, I don't know, it's a fairly hefty version. So I don't know how we're gonna send it. It might be, you're gonna get it electronically.
Do them, put them on there. If you're gonna print them, just leave them on the desk.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
I don't wanna her copy.
Yeah, no.
A hard copy is good, cause when you get so far and you fall asleep, you can mark your page and do.
Okay.
You try to sit down and read it cover to cover? Um, even though you lived it for two years?
We walked through it in, well, Monday, we, we went cover to cover and I found myself going, we got that, we got. So, all right. Um, we do have a thank you note. Uh, this is very nice to Rutland Town Select Board. Mary, Joe, Sharon, Kurt and Matt, also Barbara and the Planning Commission and Bill Sweet. Thanks for everything. Your thoughtfulness means so much more than words can ever say. A special thanks go out to you and Carrie and Sue and Deb for all the support and care that you folks emulate so well. For as long as we have lived in the town, you have done extremely well in working with the best interests of all in mind. God bless and best wishes, Jim Hall and Andy. So, very nice. We should put that up on our board. Okay. Um, Personnel Committee, we did our committee report. Any other committees not? Nope. Okay. Um, anything else, Bill? Did we do everything in the folder?
Two, yeah, there's two things. You have reimbursement requests and the C A I contract.
There's in there too.
Good.
Okay. Um, any other new items from anyone? New business? Remember, we still have the executive session. We did committee meetings, budget planning with, um, we've done the budget planning, project list is right there. Um, and need an executive session for um, a person, a couple of personnel matters, um, and I think it's mostly personnel matters. Uh, yeah, okay. Several. And for, we'll have Mike Rowe in for the first one. And, yeah.
So move.
Motion's been made to go into executive session for personnel matters. Is there a second?
Second.
motions made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Session at uh, not, uh, eight forty-eight? Is there any motion?
Move to adjourn.
Two motions to adjourn a second, two seconds. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all.